So uh. Let's call the meeting to order, Park and Rec Meeting for April 2023. Sally, can we get the roll?
Eisner?
Here.
He?
Here.
Kubo? Merrill? Um, he wasn't excused, but he was said he would be on Zoom. Um, Robertson? Robinson?
Here.
And Roser?
I'm on Zoom.
On Zoom, but he wasn't excused. And Rick DeGolia?
I'm here.
Okay, and Tony's here.
Yeah.
Uh, okay, so next we will take any public comments that we have. Are there any public comments for um, anything for Park and Rec, either online or in person? Do you have a public comment? We will in about one minute. So anything other than the tennis courts?
And when you speak, I'm, you're gonna speak up at the mic so that we can get it on Zoom, so we can get it on the recording.
Okay, uh, seeing no, there's no online comments, right?
I don't see anything.
Okay, seeing there's no comments, why don't we move on? We are gonna uh, move the committee and staff reports to the very end unless someone has an objection. Uh, seeing none, we will first go to uh, agenda item one, which is approval of the uh, minutes for March as meeting. Any further comments or changes that anyone has? If not, can I get the motion to approve?
Um, so I made all the edits except for, I wasn't sure how to put on the minutes if somebody is attending by Zoom as just like a resident. So I need confirmation on that, but you could approve. You can approve pending that, I guess.
Yeah, I'm fine acknowledging that there's, so putting their name and putting Zoom next to it until we get a determination from the town attorney or city manager.
Sounds good.
Okay, second? Okay, all in favor?
I'm not sure that's right.
Okay.
Just putting their name with Zoom, that suggests to me they have a legitimate Zoom participation. Which they don't, because they can't vote.
Yeah.
As Rick and I were talking about, they're really members of the public at that point.
Yeah.
And so, the question is, did Anthony answer the question?
He's, he's not here, he's, he's on leave. So, we can wait till the next meeting to approve, or I can, okay.
What, when, when you're on Zoom, how to acknowledge that they're there, but they're not members of the committee because they have to have an excused ab- absence in order to be participants, but they, they were physically, or they were at the meeting because.
The issue is found at, if you're not present, did you have to have your address, if you are present publicly? Unless you satisfy one, two emergency criteria, which is if you're sick or you're way off the issue of business of the committee. In which case, you can do that, so I just really don't have to pre-identify where you are, but if you are remote and you have, and the agenda hasn't identified where you are, then you can't be on the committee. Well, maybe it's an absentee, I don't know, excuse, it's an absentee.
Well, maybe we should put in the minutes, Zoom not voting or something.
Oh, yeah, okay.
I, I think it brings up another issue though, if they are whatever this status is, not unexcused, not part of the, um, are they able to participate as committee members during a discussion as opposed to public comment? How are we, how do we want to treat that?
We're supposed to treat as public comment.
So they can't vote, but they can participate?
Bye, Anthony.
That's what Sally was getting Anthony, 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 Anthony's not, Anthony's not leaving, so.
So right now, yeah.
Don't worry about it, I mean, it will only become an issue if there's a mixed vote on something.
Yeah, I guess it's not just the vote, though, it is the discussion.
I'm, I'm happy to let the public comment as much as they want in this meeting because I don't see a lot of people on and it's fine.
I just want.
This is not housing.
Yeah.
It's only pickleball or tennis courts. Okay, so um, so we have the acknowledgement that it's, it's Zoom or some sort and then.
It, it's gonna say something like, unexcused, but Zoom, but on Zoom.
Okay, so I had a first and a second, so all in favor of the minutes as amended? I, any abstentions or no's? Hearing none? Passes. So let's move on to uh, item number two, presentations. Do we have uh, Michael or Player Capital?
Hey guys.
Hey, Michael. Long time.
Yes, exactly.
About twenty minutes, thirty minutes?
Yeah. All right.
Um, so Michael, um, just as previously you've done, if you could just go through how the program's going and any kind of issues, et cetera, and then um, I know the committee will have questions and um, after they're gonna have a discussion on the tennis program.
So, and let me just let the members of the public know what we're gonna do. Michael's gonna give his presentation and then we'll uh, bring it back to the committee. If you have any questions, then I'll open up the public comments and then we'll have final comments from the committee and then if we have anything to vote on, then vote on that. Uh, the floor is yours, Michael.
Okay, well, um, yeah, since the last time, I think we had this about, I think, in September. Um, things are pretty much the same, except for the weather. I mean, it's uh, this tennis court usage and lessons are obviously, and when it rains, it's down. Um, and then people get out of the habit, so it's a little bit unusual compared to years past due to weather, but besides that, tennis courts are, good thing is the tennis courts uh, got all redone and they held up well under that uh, really bad weather condition, so that was good news because sometimes really bad weather like that can make the ground move or create cracking and that didn't happen, so that was uh, really good news. Other than that, uh, things are pretty much the same as, as before.
Okay, uh, thank you, Michael. Are there any questions that the committee has?
Nobody has any questions for Michael?
I'm confused, I'm sorry. I, I understood we're gonna ask questions and we're gonna have the public and then we're gonna ask questions. What are the difference? Areas of us asking questions?
So this, these are any questions we have for Michael about his program, then I'll uh, we're required to provide ability for public to comment, and if they want to ask their questions, they can ask it too. But um, and then, once we have all the questions answered, or if there's more questions that gets entailed from the questions, then we can continue on with questions, have discussion about any things that we want to maybe propose for the tennis program that, that is different than what we're doing today.
So right now, he's just presenting his yearly check-in of, of what, what happened in the last year. Um, and then we'll move on after the public comment, et cetera, we'll move on to the item, which is talking about the tennis program going forward, et cetera. How we can improve it. Um, no, just when you wanna speak, put your mic on.
Yeah, yeah. So if you have any questions about the, say, the practice court area or questions about the clay court, you know, you can ask it now, that type of thing. Uh, or asking questions about, you know, key holders and also um, how their, is, is Player Capital use the courts versus key holders?
Are we gonna run through?
Points on the second, the bullet points, are we gonna run through the bullet points?
We could do that as well, um, if, if you guys want. If that's what you guys want.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, okay, what?
I have a, I have a lot of questions, so I'm just trying not to, I wanna figure out when I'm supposed to be asking and, and where and like.
I didn't get it, packet. Oh, here's one, thank you. And uh, I can, I mean, if you don't.
Way of heading off.
I mean, if uh, if, if the committee was, I guess I could go through each of these questions with Michael and.
Well, I'm sorry, no, I, I love, can we ask a question now about usage?
Sure, sure.
So Michael, on the report for uh, if we have, um, it turns out that park hours in March, despite all our terrible weather, are better than July, August, September, and October, and every other month.
Well, can you turn your microphone?
There you go.
Oh, I'm sorry. So the report um, of hours says that your court hours have been very high, higher than any other month, including the last summer. Um, your number of students is up, uh, private lessons are way up.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and key holder hours are up. Can, can you explain sort of how that, how that's happened?
Yeah, so basically, a lot of times it doesn't get, well, it doesn't get erased off the main thing, it just, it just, for simplicity's sake, it just gets off the reservation system. So, when things get, when it gets rained out, a lot of times the reservations are not removed or this or that.
Okay, so it's based on the reservation.
But that's still impressive that you would have that many reservations compared to July, August, September, and October. How can that, I mean, it seems to me, it, and particularly on your number of private lessons, wouldn't that be accurate?
July, well, and, and Atherton, actually, the summer is one of our low parts because people go to their whatever, summer vacation homes, so unusual area that you know, summer is actually, most everywhere else in the country, summers are big time.
Okay. But your private lessons, you have signed up, are way more than September, October, November. So is that not a good sign? I mean, things have picked up and you're back pre-COVID rate or not?
Yeah, it's a, it's a good sign, the, the privates are going well as long as it doesn't rain.
Yeah, okay, thank you. And the key holder hours, would that be the same? That's reservations made by key holders?
Well, yeah, I mean, it's when it doesn't rain, of course.
No, but I mean, I'm looking at this and the reservations are very substantial. So you've had kind of a record of private lessons over the last eight months, highest ever. And you've had essentially key holders at the highest ever. So again, it shows to me whether they, you know, whether they got rained out or not. But we've got a lot of very healthy activity there. Is that kind of a good way to read it?
Yeah, definitely. It was going really well before the rain, it was uh, you know, people were in a groove, so that definitely helps.
What is the public court hours that drops off to zero after the first three months mean?
Is your speaker on?
Yeah, it's on, it's on. I'm looking over.
I can answer that, so. I don't think Player Capital is tracking that anymore, so it should just be a column that's removed.
But I'm, thank you. I figured something like that.
Was it part of some other, some other column now? Did it merge into another column? Because I'm trying to count for, you know, missing a hundred or so hours somewhere else.
Mm-hmm.
I don't see it reflected anywhere else.
Well, I think it's hard to track the public court hours.
What, huh, what is the public court hours?
The key holder hours that make a reservation. So.
Is it the combination of play and, no, not coin?
Well, it shouldn't be public court hours because you have to be a key holder or taking a lesson.
Yeah.
So they're actually, definitionally, public court hours doesn't make any sense.
Oh.
I don't think, I mean, it's gone, so that's a moot point, but.
Yeah, and maybe we shouldn't belabor it too much.
Yeah, but just, let's just get it off the list.
Okay. Um, if there's uh, why don't we go through the list of discussion points one by one? Is that okay, Michael?
Yeah.
Uh, so, what are your thoughts on the clay court, um, in terms of, you know, the your long-term plans if you could replace it with a hard court? Uh, is it, is it a good enough condition, the clay court, does you continue using, or would the usage be better if we made it to clay?
Yeah, the usage would, yeah, the usage would definitely be better as a hard court. I mean, right now people don't like, if we need a fourth court, then that's the one that we usually use to let the key holders have two hard court. Um, it's, it's good enough for like the younger kids' lessons and stuff. But uh, yeah, people don't love it, so I mean, it would definitely be more utilized as a hard court than a clay court.
Okay, and is that a, a strong feeling or like?
Yeah, it would definitely be used more if it was a hardcore.
Okay.
Michael, when I have looked at the clay court, I see very young kids who are within ten feet or twelve feet of the net. Just being ball dropped by instructor the old way and you knock it over. Is there anything any more vigorous than that that's done on that court?
Uh, I mean, you can, but it's, you know, it's a little bumpy, so you get a lot of bad balances and stuff, it's just the the quality of play is not there. If you wanna, you know, rally at a, like, you know, like for adults and stuff, they don't enjoy it, so it's usually a feeding type of court.
Are there any more questions about the play court that anyone has?
What else, what else do we need to do to move the idea of converting it forward?
We could, at the end of this, we could uh, take a vote on a, on a recommendation that the council will consider in capital plan, replace the court with a hard court with, and I'll, I'll ask Michael, would you be in favor of, of such a proposal if we replace the, if we got a hard court to replace the clay court?
Yeah, definitely. I mean, that would be great. I mean, if the money's there, it would be great.
Okay. Um, no other questions on this clay court? Okay. Um, the next question is about the practice wall, the tennis practice wall near the train tracks. Is it something, uh, Michael, that you see any tennis players use, or do you have your students use it?
No, it's, it's rarely used. Maybe there's sometimes some lacrosse people go and throw against there once in a while and then I've seen a couple people kicking soccer ball, but I mean, the ground is too, too uh, what's it called? It's not even for a, a ball to hit it, like, so it's usually either uh, soccer player, once in a while comes there and, or a lacrosse player, but that's about it. That's maybe one or two times a month.
Would you miss it then if we, if uh, say the committee demolished it and uh, maybe either found a new purpose for it or just left it as?
Yeah, I think it'd be better, it'd definitely be better used as something else.
It's not gonna take a long time. Any questions from the committee?
I have some general questions, so I just wanna, I wanna wait or as we kind of go through some of these.
Okay, then yeah, if you find something relevant, you can ask your question.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, uh, then we'll move on to the next uh, topic, which is tennis tournaments. I think you were the one asking Noah about.
Yeah, um, Michael, have you thought about doing anything, what I would call community building? Um, in terms of tennis activity, whether it be tournaments, whether it be beginner clinics um, that are open to Atherton community members, whether it's wine and cheese social, whatever those things are. I see them being done at other facilities, um, and I'm trying to, I, I haven't seen any since, things, so maybe I'm, I'm not aware of them, but can you comment on that?
Yeah, we haven't done any of them, uh, because I think we did we did one for the clay court and we did one, uh, I think at the very beginning in 2014. There hasn't been a lot of interest, I mean, as far, because most of the people, what, of our Player Capital people, it's generally uh, the adults play at their clubs and then they send their kids here for lessons. So it's like, most of them do their social activi- activities at the clubs generally, or a lot, there's a big program at Menlo School and Sacred Heart, so they'll do them there, so there hasn't been a huge, I mean, we could give it a try. If there was something, I think it would be good if it was like something organized with like that was that uh, National Night Out or something, or something like, do something like that would be in conjunction with another um activity, I think would work well.
Okay.
Uh, any other questions on the tennis tournaments? Uh, tennis court reservations. Um. So uh, I guess the question here, Michael, is that uh, is there, I, I, I've heard that there's a, a lot of uh, interest in key holders playing tennis like in the late afternoons and on the weekends. And certainly, I expect those were the times that you probably have the most lessons and such. Is there a way that you can think of, we can find a way that, say, tennis key holders can get more court time during those times where, I guess, you know, there's no school or people are a little off in the afternoons or on the weekends? Uh, because I know you, you are, I think you were entitled to four courts, actually, it's actually not quite clear in the contract, if it's now four courts all the time or four and three on Saturday, but um, I'm trying to think of if there's a way we could get key holders to be able to get more time and if you thought of anything that could work as a compromise.
Yeah, there, there, right now, it, it's, it's a pretty good balance. I mean, once, it's once in a while they might not be able to do, get it at the exact time, but in general, there's not too much, like, right now, there's not, people get out of the habit of playing, so it's not too much, and then summer's very rarely a problem. It's generally, once in a while, a few months a year that maybe they'll be compacted, but overall I haven't seen where there's a huge issue. I think maybe actually the biggest is maybe when the weather's good, when there's daylight savings problem. That's probably the biggest is, but that problem might be going away because there's no more daylight savings. So there's gonna be at least till six. I think when it, when the daylight was dark at five, so there's pretty much an hour to hour and a half after, that was, that definitely compacted the courts after, during the weekdays.
Can I ask about the bigger issue, which is nowhere in the contract that I've seen, does it spell out the breakdown of courts? Um, and unless I'm unaware of something, there's nothing that says how many courts are for Player Capital and how many are for the public. Um, I, you, no, there isn't.
Not since 2014.
It was only till the website, it specifically said till the website gets done. Um, now, I obviously wasn't here during those discussions, but is that what, has there been some other side letter, some other thing that talked about that there's supposed to be four courts for, um, I'll call it three plus the clay for Player Capital and two for the key holders?
I'm not aware of, I don't know if staff is aware of one.
Uh, no, there's not, there haven't been any amendments on that original agreement. It's just been more like an understanding. Um, but it's something that we can put in, we can make that amendment in the new contract or the uh, updated contract. I know Michael's contract is up on September 26th. With two one-year extensions.
Okay.
So that is something that we could add to the, to the update.
Okay.
Um, also.
Just to make it clear that how many courts Michael gets and how many courts are for the public?
Yes, I mean, we heard it relative to, you know, people when they, and, you know, came and talked about pickleball. Public, the key holder saying it's hard to get court time, um, which already, that tells me there's potential problems. Additionally, I'm, I'm intrigued because we've talked about four courts. Three plus the clay court to be used by Player Capital, but I, when I go on your reservation system, Michael, and I, I brought this up last month as well, I continue to see four concrete courts being reserved for Player Capital. Um, leaving a community member, a key holder, who wants to go on and make a reservation during certain hours out of luck. Why is that?
That's a good question, yes. So basically, the clay court, because it's in bad condition. Well, first of all, the contract states that I have four usable courts, so the clay court, when it rains, doesn't drain, it takes actually, when it rains really hard, it takes a few days, which is out of commission. So then, we use the hard court. Out of courtesy for the key holders, we always try to use the clay, because we, we don't we know that a lot of key holders don't like the clay. It's not a thing that says we have to use the clay. So when it, it's better weather, like right now, you'll see us always on the clay court and three hard courts. That's not gonna be a problem anymore because the rainy season's over, but you did see that for the last three months after it would rain heavily. Because it would take about two to three days before it was not muddy.
Right, so at four o'clock today, there are four reservations, courts two, four, five, and six are reserved by Player Capital. Right. And I, and whether or not they are being actually used for lessons, I don't know, but if I'm a member of the public, I and I'm not Nicole, because she reserved Court One, her only choice are, that, a person at that time's only choices to play on the clay, which of course they would need to pay an additional clay court fee, um, or key fee. Um, and it's just not available, so the person's out of luck if that would be their hour, so I find it, while I hear you, one, there's confusion in the contract, but I also not sure I'm, I'm finding uh, actual um, what I would say is, you guys are, are making your reservations, you're holding these hours for your private lessons and limiting some of our public usage. And I don't think that that's what even should be, was in the intention of the contract.
Okay, I will have to check that today. I don't believe, with, maybe there was a mistake, once in a while, there's a mistake on it, but we were as you can see, that we were not only, we were not using more than three hard courts today, as you could see when we, you guys were there. There is probably a mistake from, on the admin side. Um, but in general, that, that's very rare.
When, when a lesson's canceled, do you, does your staff uh, quickly cancel it so that it can be freed up for other?
Yes.
Use, okay.
I think the, actually, I think this comment was put on here as, for an actually different point, which is one that uh, our committee member Bob Roser uh, raised last time. And that is how to address times reserved and but not used by the key holders. That's the problem that he identified.
I've kind of leaked it accidentally into the fourth bullet point.
Yeah, okay.
But yeah.
But anyway.
Can address that as well.
Sure, no, that's right, whenever you want to do.
We'll circle back to that.
Okay.
It's already on this.
I think either one is a valid issue.
Yeah.
It's, what it means is one of our key holders doesn't think that they can play tennis when they really can, whether it be because there's an additional lesson being um, reserved, or there's a key holder that isn't showing up.
Right.
I'm, uh, I don't know if I'm as concerned with a key holder not showing up. I don't know if it's happened that common, but um, you know.
It probably does.
I'm sure it does.
Same problem, though. If you have a key holder that not show up, you go online and you can't play tennis.
Yeah, exactly, and you're frustrated, you're frustrated as a member of the public.
Yeah, I think it's equally, I think it's an equal problem myself, from what I understand, so. And that one, there's no teeth, there's nothing in there, they haven't been warned, so I think
They're reserving time that they don't.
There's some action that we can take in.
Well, we do actually, like, we do notice when the public court is reserved and they don't show up, we do send a courtesy email. And most, most of the people are pretty good about apologizing, say they'll try to next time in general, so we do send out little courtesy reminders.
Great.
How often does, what would you say, how often are things?
Oh, they're pretty responsi-, I would say about there's a ninety percent show-up rate, so there, most of the people are pretty responsible.
Michael, are you there all day, so you would know when there's a no-show?
No, I'm not there all the time, but when I'm there, or sometimes when the other coaches are there, if somebody doesn't show up. Usually, we do it mostly on the more peak time hours, but besides that, um, yeah, so usually that's when we, we'll, we'll send them out when it, it's more the busy times.
So i- is there a problem with key holders not getting courts when they want it? Because I haven't heard that problem. They haven't come to the Park and Rec Committee and given a public comment about that.
Yeah, I've had a couple people email me.
And we, we heard it in relation to the pickleball uh, comments that, that uh, Michael's group submitted, saying, we don't want to have pickleball because we already have a tough time. uh, Michael's group submitted saying, we don't want to have pickleball because we already have a tough time reserving courts.
Yeah, I would say that's a little bit different, only because they're weighing pickleball and tennis and so.
I think, I don't think it's a different issue, quite frankly.
But I think people commenting, if they don't want, that's something you're gonna add in if they don't want to have pickleball. So, so I'll just say the comments I've heard, because I think maybe they, they talk to you more, Noah, than to me, are, are just tennis. Okay. So it's just a couple of people, and it might be because during COVID, a lot of people were playing tennis. And then they had trouble. I don't know if it still exists now, but part of this is like looking into this. I know we have some people who want to give public comment. I, I don't, maybe we should turn it over.
That'd be great. I think so.
Yeah, I don't want to keep.
Waste their time if they wanna.
Do you guys, oh, anyone online or in person want to give any public comment related to the tennis program? Go ahead. Yeah, please. If you could introduce yourself and, uh, for this.
I think so. Nope.
Pretty loud.
Well, you can use, oh, if you want, you can sit up here and, uh, is it working or?
Hello?
Oh, it's working, it's working.
So first of all, I'm coming into this blind because I know nothing about what's going on at the courts, because I haven't, in fact, I was on Parks and Rep fif- fifteen years ago. And I probably, that's my most updated stuff. So I was just told that you guys were going to discuss the possibility of pickleball. So I wanted to share my experience and maybe that would help you make a decision. So I started playing pickleball about a year ago. Um, and if you're not familiar with pickleball, it was actually invented, I don't know, like in the sixties or seventies, but became super popular three years ago. Um, I, now I play, uh, two and a half to three hours a day, five to six days a week. Over at, uh, at, uh, Mellow, uh, Mellow Park on Middle, Nealon Park, Nealon Park. And, um, I play mostly now, I play in the morning. Because I used to play in the afternoon, like around four o'clock. And when I started to become addicted a year ago, I would start showing up on Mondays and Wednesdays and there was nobody there. So it looks like in the afternoon, there's kind of a crowd, like a pickup game that was there Tuesdays and Thursdays. And when I found out there wasn't anybody playing regularly, Monday, Wednesdays or Fridays, I found out there was a morning group that plays regularly. And so I started playing in the morning and it's every day. There's pickleball there every day. You just drop in and there's people playing. They, they haven't charged for a key in the, at least in a year and a half that I, in the year that I've been playing. And from what I understand, they probably stopped charging for keys around COVID time. And I don't know if they are planning to start charging for keys. I, I'm not. But what I have seen in my many hours a week of playing is quite often there are people waiting to play pickleball and rarely, in fact, if ever, there's never anybody waiting to play tennis. And they probably have the same amount of courts we have. I think they have
What they've done in Mellow Park is they've taken one court.
You want to sit down? So that people online can hear you.
So what they've done in Mellow Park, oh goodness, is they've taken one court. So here's, like, here's this regular tennis court with the net, right? And they put pickleball, 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 pickleball. So now on one tennis court in Mellow Park, we can get sixteen people playing. Versus at the most, four playing tennis. And like I said, there's always, and even when it's raining, we're out there playing and, you know, until it gets too slippery. And then the minute the rain stops, we're there on the ground with our towels trying to dry it up. So we can get playing again and the tennis people are long gone the second they see one drop. So it's a game that, like I said, has exploded and you can get a whole lot of people on one court. And, um, I will say that what I've learned from the Mellow Park crowd is I know of one other Atherton resident who plays there weekly. She, her, she has a, a group that plays every Monday. And then I am probably the only other Atherton person that plays regularly on those courts. Everyone else is Mellow Park, Redwood City and Palo Alto. And they, everybody kind of plays, they kind of have their favorite court. And a lot of those people, their favorite court is the Nealon Court. A lot come from the Mitchell Court, then you hear the Red Morton crowd. But they kind of rotate, you know, Red Morton has some indoor courts. Um, I went there one time when it was raining and I spent more time on the bench than I did playing because there was like thirty people waiting to play. So anyway, my point is that, uh, pickleball is very popular right now. And a lot of the people are ex-tennis players. Oh, and one of the, there was one guy there that was giving free lessons and that was drawing a lot of people to come and learn. Like he'd say, I'm gonna be here Wednesday at nine AM and he'd have twelve people there learning to play pickleball. They just, just from word of mouth. They have a, um, we have a Team Reach account that has over three hundred people on it. So like, if you, if you show up and nobody's there, hey, how come nobody's here? And people start popping up. So, oh, and the other thing is, I mean, like I said, I'm coming into this blind, so I don't know how busy the courts are and I haven't been on the reservation thing in years. But I'm guessing the courts in Atherton are probably not real busy in the morning because there's no kids and everyone's at school or work. Um, but it seems like most of the people who are playing at Mellow Park are playing in the morning. So if you were able to take one court, what, and I will tell you, has anybody been over at the courts at Mellow Park?
Yep.
Oh, okay. So, um, like the court is still lined as a tennis court. But then they have the pickleball lines over it, which is kind of weird the first time you play, but after that it's fine. But apparently it's super weird for tennis players. Um, that's what I heard. Uh, I think that's all I know about pickleballs.
Thank you.
Name again, uh, somebody on Zoom wanted.
Kat Westover.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Westover.
So anyway, um, let me know.
Thank you.
I know what I want to tell you. So I have, in the last year, made twenty or thirty friends from the Mellow Park courts. What I think would be really great is that we have this here, so I can make twenty or thirty community friends from Atherton. So that it's, you know, I'm getting to know, like, I've lost my friends, I'm not lost them, but I don't have that, that community anymore from my friend, my kids being in school. And now that I'm retired, gosh, it'd be really nice to have my pickleball friends that are here in Atherton. So anyway, that's, um, all I have to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Uh, are there any other public comments, either online or in person? Do you see anything, Sally? I don't know if I can tell.
But he's raising their hands.
Um, well, we bring it back and continue our discussion. Um, I guess let's finish the bullet point four, then go back to bullet point three. Uh, was there anything else we wanted to ask?
Um, we're on bullet point four, the allocation. No, I think.
Any, anything else from the committee at this point? If not, we'll go back to bullet point three. Um, in terms of, uh, tennis court reservations, Michael.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, yeah, I, I guess you, you kind of partially answered already saying about ninety percent of the folks keep their times. But do you have any ideas about, um, about making sure people, if they're going to, uh, make a reservation, they actually hold, they keep the reservation? Um, has, has the letter, I guess you, was it, he's mentioned through the letter?
Hmm, yeah.
Email.
An email.
Email, yeah. Uh, has that been pretty effective, you thought, you think?
Yeah, I think most people are pretty responsible. And, you know, so, uh, obviously sometimes people forget, but in general, most of the time people are responsible about keeping their reserve or canceling them if they're not gonna make it.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the committee on this one?
Michael, is it possible that people reserve? Uh, as I recall, they reserve after you've reserved for Player's Capital. Is it possible they put their re- reservation in so that maybe they're going to play, so they have a spot? And then they decide later that, well, it didn't work out, they couldn't get their partners or whatever. Is that one reason why the no-shows might take place?
Yep. That's possible. I mean, I haven't asked any of them, but I mean, it's possible, for sure.
Yeah, if it's difficult to get a court, I can see why somebody might put down the name if they want to play Saturday morning or something. Then decide later whether to use it.
Yeah.
It feels like ten percent is, you know, that feels like a pretty good number. That you, you're only seeing ten percent no-shows. So I'm, I'm actually very surprised. Yeah, me too. I really expected that to be a lot higher. As far as I'm concerned, the reservation system's working and it's, I didn't even know that you followed up with somebody who didn't show up, which that's wonderful because they're not gonna want a second follow-up. So I'm, I think it's great that we're only losing ten percent.
And, Michael, are the mornings fairly open? Or are they, do they get filled up between Player Capital and Q O?
No, I think there, maybe Friday morning might get more full, but most of the, most of the mornings, I think there's at least a quarter or two open.
Uh, let's move on to the last major bullet point. Uh, the tennis facility management agreement, revenue versus costs. I, I think I added this one. One thing I noticed about the original twenty-fourteen contract and what's been in place ever since with Player Capital is that we've kept the, uh, forty thousand dollar, uh, uh, charge to Player Capital the same for the last, you know, nine years or so. We've had, uh, Michael's company. And in that time, costs have gone up in terms of, you know, we've had to refurbish the courts. And then we may now be looking at also refurbishing the, uh, the clay court back into a hard court. And I was wondering if the committee had any ideas about, uh, how we should make sure that we maintain our ability to maintain the courts, keep up with what, um, uh, the cost of, cost of maintaining them. So whether the revenue coming in, uh, we have to keep that of keeping up with, uh, say, the level of inflation or, or something else, or maybe another, another possible, say, in terms of usage.
Yeah, I, I share your concern. Um, I, I also noticed that in section four B of the contract, uh, Player Capital is supposed to pay every three years an additional fifteen thousand dollars to be used, uh, for tennis maintenance or re- for, uh, resurfacing other expense. Has that happened in twenty fifteen, twenty eighteen and twenty twenty-one? Michael?
That happened in twenty, I think in the new contract after COVID, it, it, we took it out. But the one before it was, before I did pay that beforehand.
Is that correct? Cause I, I mean, I'm confused because there, I noticed in the co- the document that Sally sent out, there's kind of a missing, you go from section four A to section seven. But, um, there is a section four B and there's obviously a five and a six in the original. Um, and those, that four B is pretty, pretty important. Fifteen thousand dollars to the town every three years. Do we have?
I'm gonna follow up and confirm. He makes the payments through finance, so.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's forty-five thousand dollars of revenue that I hope we didn't miss. Um, uh, the other, the other thing, Michael, um, so I went on and I looked and, um, uh, the in twenty fourteen, when you signed the contract with the town, you had a couple of coaches, like Coach Pete, charging a hundred dollars an hour, Coach Jose charging eighty-five dollars an hour, and the most affordable coach was seventy-five dollars an hour. Uh, currently, those two coaches are a hundred and fifty dollars an hour. Um, you know, a fifty and a seventy-five percent increase and the most affordable coach is a hundred and twenty dollars an hour. Um, clinics have also gone up significantly, cost to, you know, what you say is a lot of Atherton residents, um, but at the same time, we paid the same, we've got, we've, we, the town have received the same amount of revenue from. Uh, additionally, uh, the second part of that is I looked at similar contracts that Pleasanton, Mountain View, Sunnyvale have with their tennis provider. And they have an escalating scale. Um, uh, for instance, I believe Pleasanton went up from eighty thousand dollars a year and they have more courts to a hundred and thirty thousand dollars in the seventh year. We're forty and forty, um, nine years into, or eight years into this. Um, do we, uh, Michael, ha- you know, first I would just put it on, you know, why is the cost gone up so much for tennis lessons to our community? Um, and is this going to increase going forward?
So the cost, that's the hour, that most people do that packages, so the package rates are significantly lower.
They're, they are lower, but the same percentages exist. I can, you know, so that's a non-issue. The prices have increased. So what, so do, will they continue to increase? Um, and how much do you expect them to escalate going forward?
Well, we tried to keep them amount close to worth, around market rate. They're actually below the market rate in this area.
Think you, you will increase them. Okay, that's good.
I mean, it's possible. I mean, eventually, I mean, that's, oh, it.
Um, so am I right to assume, you know, given the number of clinic hour, or sorry, private lesson hours and that it's roughly generating about twenty-five thousand dollars in revenue for your, per month?
Yeah, I haven't done the exact calculations.
Okay, but that sounds about right.
It could be somewhere. I mean, yeah, I mean, it, it's possible. I mean, it would have to be.
Um, yeah, I mean, I certainly think that the town should consider a contract that escalates like all these other towns are doing. Um, I believe we probably deserve to make sure that our, our rates are comparable with other facilities, just as Michael is choosing to have, make sure his, his, uh, tennis clinics and, and private lessons are comparable to market. I think we should make sure that we're comparable to market and what the market is seemingly doing is, is increasing rates reasonably, um, you know, generally, you know, a few thousand dollars each year.
Yeah, well, we, that, I, I totally agree. We, at last council meeting, it was already agreed it will go up. So it's just, you know, finding a, a, uh, happy number, which I think is fair.
Are there any other questions?
No, I wondered if, when you looked at those other communities, is their tennis person responsible for the entire organization? All tennis courts there?
Yes, uh, if you look at Sunnyvale, um, I haven't been to Pleasanton, but if you go to Sunnyvale, um, they have a lot of tennis courts at Sunnyvale Tennis Center. They're also responsible for their, they have a, a larger scope. They have a pro shop. They have some food services. Um, they also have a incredibly thriving pickleball program. Um, uh, there, um, where they're also making, uh, according to the, uh, pickleball and they're making a lot of money off pickleball lessons and clinics. Um, but yes, um, so it might be, they are, there's more courts there, but I think what, what is most important is that we think of it as, you know, kind of price per court is, is probably the smartest way to do that. Um, that, you know, if we only had one court, I don't think you could compare it to a town that has two hundred courts, but I think if, if we're talking, we have six courts and another town has ten courts, you should be able to look at the rent, so to speak, to be similar, both from a rent and a, a capital. Um, because these, the, uh, you know, kind of that fifteen thousand dollars every three years, these other uh, groups also pay a capital, um, uh, fee every s- number of years. I think you should look at it on a per-court ratio. That's what I would recommend.
These are public courts, right?
Yeah, they're, they're.
They're all city courts.
They are. Yeah.
Completely unlike ours. Ours are all donated parks, uh, courts. These are all set up to be privately funded and privately paid for by the key holders and by Player Capital. And yours talking about pro shops and things like that, obviously, there's a And yours talking about pro shops and things like that, obviously, there's a lot more money that somebody can pay back to the town for using their courts at that point, right?
Maybe I'm not understanding the distinction here.
Well, you have somebody in Sunnyvale who's running a pro shop, who's making money off food, it sounds like what you said, and those are public courts. Those are courts owned by the town, which they are essentially leasing out for some private lessons and others, I assume, are not. Here, all those courts were donated. This is, this is not a city facility where we say we paid for them because we did not. Now, we are paying for some upkeep.
The city owns.
Well, the city owns them, but the city, city didn't pay for them.
We paid for, we paid to, I mean, whether or not it was donated dollars, I don't know how Sunnyvale or all these other, um, got every dollar for everything, but I mean, that shouldn't be, these are, as far as I'm concerned, the, the park is a town property, whether it is Knox Preschool or Cater Two, or they're all, we're all, these are, uh, vendors providing services to our community at the park. Um, I don't see the, the difference.
I see a great difference. These are parks, again, a park facility where we allowed private people to come in and donate and set up a tennis center. At that point, that was donated. We set it up so that people had to pay to use it, that right from the beginning. That's where the key holders came from. And as an adjunct to that, we set it up with Player Capital. And that was a way to give a return on the cost. A city pays all that themselves, Sunnyvale and so on. We don't, we didn't have no capital expense to start with, as I understand.
Twenty fourteen was the year it's all changed?
Very different.
Well, there was another tennis vendor before twenty fourteen.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, so it's very different. But anyway, I think the real point is, what's the cost of maintaining it to the city? And as Michael says, he's willing to adjust the, the payment.
There's also an issue, it's a totally, I've played in Sunnyvale a lot on tennis, they have enormous amounts of USTA. It's, it's a really different setup and they're running, you know, you can buy rackets, you can buy clothes, you can buy food. So I'm just saying, it's not, I'm not disagreeing that we need to price it accordingly, but those undertakings are, they're just a substantially different business model and how they get their revenue again is multifaceted compared to us. We don't have any, um, we don't have teams, we don't have all that sort of stuff.
Okay, um, I'll just make a few comments, I'll just my own ideas. Um, I, I think we should stay with kind of a flat rate model that, that Atherton has had. Um, I don't think the revenue share gets too complicated, um, and, and just kind of messy. Um, in terms of the forty K, I do think that should be adjusted just because we can't keep that forty K forever. The courts do need regular maintenance and the cost is going to increase. So I think in fairness to the town and also to Michael, because we need to pay to maintain it, to make sure we have the money to maintain it yet. Uh, keep, keep our, our charge in line with our costs. Uh, so that should be adjusted, maybe keeping up with inflation. And instead of the fifteen K once every three years, maybe we just wrap that as part of the annual monthly, you know, so, so so you have five K a year divided by twelve, so you just increase the monthly rate by.
Well, I, I think we have to really look at what is appropriate and I, maybe it's not Sunnyvale, maybe there's other gauges, but I think that that should be a job of, of staff as we look at what is, you know, what are, and maybe it's not what staff thinks, it's what the market will bear.
I'm just giving you my ideas, we can make a recommendation to council if we have the, if you have.
Yeah, I'm not sure what, yeah, it seems common that these, these vendors do not just the monthly, but have a additional capital improvement. I don't know why, but that's what I see as standard, so I'm assuming there's a good reason.
I just like, keep things simple because, because this tri-yearly payment, like, you know.
Yeah, maybe we missed it, yeah.
We don't know, right? If it's the same amount every month, then that's easy to do.
That's fair, fair point.
We, we have an understanding of, um, are we covering the cost of the courts? We're talking a lot about the revenue, but what are the costs of running those courts? Do we have a, are we covering the cost? It always seems to me that we're saying we're covering the cost of running, but that's, that's the other piece of it.
Um, from, well, I'll let staff comment, I have, I have my own conception, but if Sally wants to comment about, are we covering the cost of the tennis courts? I mean, we do have a net positive in the bank account and I assume that's been from accumulated funds from the key holders and from Michael.
For a long time, we've been covering the cost of, of maintaining the tennis courts.
Through, through the incoming revenue from the tennis court.
Revenant, yes.
And then we, how do we, how do you put in for those big, like, hundred thousand dollars that we paid this year?
You mean for the redoing the whole courts?
Yeah.
I mean, we used, we just used the tennis fund for that.
Okay, so.
So every year about fifty five K gets saved up.
Because previously we were just resurfacing and that was a lot cheaper. So for the contract, we're supposed to resurface every two to three years. And so we weren't resurfacing every year and then when we did, it would just be two courts. So there's been a lot of money in the, in the, but it was accumulated.
Okay, so we get forty K from Michael, maybe another ten K from the, uh, key holders. So fifty K a year, it doesn't get spent, you just save it up and save it up. What we'll, might see a deficit is if we turn the clay court back into hardcore, that's going to be very expensive and we've not quite depleted, I don't know, we have twenty, thirty K left in the tennis fund, something like that.
So if we decided to, if that's something that you're going to recommend to council to convert the court, then we, we would have to ask council for.
So, so then, then we don't have money for anything else for tennis programs. So we, you know, if there's something else we could do, you know, maybe we should do it.
But aside from the resurfacing and then completely redoing them, is there a general, uh, dollar amount for the, for the ongoing upkeep?
No, not, not necessarily, I mean, um, we just blow the courts twice a week. Um, we change the locks. Um, whenever Michael needs a new net or things like that, we replace it, but I mean, this is.
The really minimum.
Pretty, pretty minimum.
Yeah.
Okay.
Although it doesn't seem.
Or the, the, we, we do have to fix the locks, like, um, the gates.
I, I do remember staff once telling me that in her lifetime, the courts would never need to be resurfaced again.
I don't mean resurfaced, redone.
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 The new courts will now have to go back to being resurfaced, but in my lifetime, we won't have to redo their courts.
Okay, okay.
Last, last question I have is, um, I think, Michael, at that September meeting, you mentioned that sixty percent of Player Capital's, um, uh, private lessons were Atherton residents, um, six out of ten. I guess I've, uh, had some opportunity to just ask people where they're from. Um, my data doesn't jive with that. Um, and it, you know, one of, either my data is, you know, it's anecdotal, but, um, do you, will you provide, uh, maybe your private lesson, community, uh, data wi- with the, the committee on, so that we can, and their, their addresses, so we can, you know, ver- make sure that this is really a Atherton, uh, used, uh, you know, uh, facility?
Yeah, I mean, we can, I don't know exactly where, I mean, we can go and ask everybody, we don't ask people for their addresses, but, um, yeah, I mean, if, if it's necessary, I'm not exactly sure.
You don't have that for your own people that register for your lessons?
No.
Okay, that would be good to have, I think, because we certainly have it for the key holders. Um, and we've talked about it with respect to pickleball and other things about, well, is it for?
Will the survey have, we'll be asking that question, uh?
It is. Thought you included that in the survey.
Yeah, it's just, I, I wanted to, there's a, there is a, uh, I think very clear, like, well, let's make sure our tennis, private tennis community is also of the similar makeup as our key holders, as our potential pickleball community. So, um, yeah, we would love to, if you could think about that and come back to the committee, um, uh, with maybe a plan to get your community to provide their town of, of residents and share that with the committee, that would be great, Michael.
Okay, I mean, I'll ask around, I mean, just as a business, I don't like to trouble people overall, just, hey, where are you from, can we get your address and stuff? I mean, if it was, I mean.
These are your clients, it's actually kind of surprising that you don't have this.
Well, I understand the privacy issue too, I mean, if people have been there and they're used to it, you know, I don't think, um, it's a lot to change. And, you know, if we think sixty percent of private capital lessons are Atherton, if that's a working number, plus or minus five or ten percent, that might be good enough.
It might be if it's accurate, but I, I could say it is ninety eight percent, I could say it is two percent, that, like.
Michael says it's sixty, so.
I know, and what I'm looking for is.
Forty, I mean, I'm not sure exactly, I mean, it could be, it could be forty percent, I, I don't know exactly.
Just drop twenty percent.
What, does that, that's my point, does it really matter?
The issue was.
Sure what you're trying to get at, Noah.
Well, we talked about that, one of the, you know, concerns is, well, we don't want, we don't want, uh, pickleball to be a bunch of people driving in from Redwood City or a whole service that's used by other towns. That was brought in, that was raised by members of the committee. So I would like to also, just as part of this.
But this is my service, Player Capital. I mean, let's say zero are from Atherton. I mean, this is my contract, like, this is my service that I'm running. I'm not sure exactly what that has to do with anything.
I mean, we can ask council if they care to track that information and if so, we could, uh, we, they could then ask Michael to, you know, have maybe a report, because he does have to report other things to, uh, to the town and they could just include that if, if it's something that the town feels is important to track in terms of.
Okay. I would just think that the town would want a community service that was relevant for the community, so. And, and that's, I, I would, it seems kind of.
If, if the town council feels that way, they, they can include it. Okay, so why don't we, um, go through the recommendations, although the first two are kind of more capital improvement recommendations, so I, I'm gonna kind of table that to a capital improvement discussion, so we can include that all and uh, maybe provide a ranking for council in terms of what we want to do about the clay court and when, what we want to do about the practice wall and when. But, um, are there any specific recommendations we have from this discussion that we want to, we want to, uh, give council or give staff?
Well, I would recommend obviously the price adjustment, but I think Michael's already agreed to that, so all we'd have to do is let him, uh, I think, negotiate this with the town. I'm not sure it's our role to pick a cost, but otherwise, I think we also ought to reflect that, um, that the reports on Michael's ability and what he has done, we have to remember, this was, this was lagging in twenty fourteen. Michael has turned this around and made in this to something we can really be proud of in our community. And that regardless of how one might fiddle with the costs and try to, to adjust them or compare them to a town that doesn't have anything like this, would seem to be a, be a mistake. So my view is, we ought to give Michael a pat on the back. We ought to say thank you for adjusting the, uh, payment. And, uh, at that point, we ought to say this is a great organization and we, I, on behalf of the committee, I would sometime move that we recommended the contract be renewed. But that would be for a future date.
Yeah, I would agree with you. Uh, any other, uh, motions or any other suggestions?
Just a comment.
Oh, just a comment, okay, so one was the price adjustment, uh, have. I think it's just a general direction to have staff and the council look at, uh, maybe bring something more market rate or not necessarily market, but adjusting to.
Michael has said he will adjust it, I think whatever Michael negotiates with the town ought to be what we do. If the town wants us to look at those numbers, I think we could volunteer to do that, otherwise I don't think that's our role. And otherwise, we should say that from all our, uh, input, uh, we've heard, that he's doing a great job.
Yeah, I, I'm not a, I'm, I'm not asking to do market rate either, but it just, it does need to be adjusted for some, with an increasing cost that town is facing. And, uh, that's, I can leave it up to staff to, to figure it out and work with Michael on that. Everyone else feels the same, um.
If, if I'm reading it right, this was a presentation.
No, we're on item five A.
The second.
Yeah, we'll, we'll move to the next.
Tennis program.
Because we finished with the Michael presentation. Move to five B, is it five B?
So you can or cannot make a recommendation, but if you recommend, if you make a recommendation, you should make a vote. If you want that to go to staff or if you wanted to go to council.
Is there any hurry of doing it? This wouldn't come up to the council, I'd take it for several months.
Um, but, yeah, the contract isn't over until September twenty sixth, so there's a little bit of time.
Unless you want to discuss this again in the next couple of months and invite Michael back.
Well, I didn't know whether, Noah had asked staff to get some more information or anything.
Is there any information that anyone needs more or, I mean, um, so that's one, one thing is the price adjustment. Any, the other thing was, um, in terms of key holders, I don't know if anyone had a specific recommendation for, uh, sorry, key holders and court usage time, if anyone had a specific recommendation for how to balance between Player Capital and key holders. Not, and I, I think, not with.
I would, I would definitely not leave it unclear. I would like to have a clear, you know, prior, you know, prior to any decision on clay court being done, let's just have a clear, you know, the contract should spell out what the exact.
Uh, when, how many does Player Capital get, how many do the key holders get?
Yep.
And.
What hours, yeah.
Over what hours.
Yep.
I think we all agree that.
Then there shouldn't, there shouldn't be any confusion that way.
It sounded from Michael that there's some, that he's already aware that he's talking to the council of, it sounded like he was aware that he was gonna have a, his, he was gonna have a, his price is gonna be increased.
Yeah, but this is about court usage.
Yeah.
Oh, but I mean, I was saying, now I'm talking about what Sally said, is it already in the town council to deal with Michael? And help go through the contract process?
I mean, we're also having, uh, we've had somebody recently come in and, uh, look at all the fees, our fee schedule. So I'm assuming that will just be part of it, so, um, we know that his rate's gonna go up, that's for sure. I just don't know how much, and that's he's negotiating with the town.
Yeah, I was just concerned whether, what our responsibility was, if it's already there, we don't have to make a motion or do anything because it's on route. It's already, do we have to send, make any kind of motion or do we?
The motion I wanted to have is just, these are the areas of concern that we think.
Okay.
Okay, not, not be specific about what they should do, but rather, um, we've gotten feedback, these are concerns that we have and then they can take a look, fair way to split it, and, and they can bring it back to us in terms of what, what kind of split do they want that they don't know.
I'd agree with Noah that we ought to think, because Michael can tell us, how is this working? If he has three there on the weekend and he has four the rest of the time, uh, and he might say, well, that's contingent on whether you redo the clay court. And that would be fine, otherwise he needs more. I would be willing to recommend actual times to the, the amount of, of, uh, court usage, rather than make staff go out and talk to Michael, uh, but that'd be a second thing we could look at.
What, what is the recommendation?
Well, whatever he says, we haven't talked to him about this.
About the.
Yeah, whether four is working, whether he needs three, he ju- suggested on Saturday, remember, but not Sunday? It's a very interesting mix.
So, Michael, um, when it's splitting up the court where we give you, you know, maybe three on Saturday and then have the, uh, key holders have three on the other three on Saturday, um, you know, how would that affect your business? So popular times I've been hearing is late afternoons, early evenings and also weekends, but what I heard from him, what I heard from you, Michael, is also that that's when you're, you have your busy times as well.
Yeah, so there's, when I first came in, I think the original contract, it was three on Sunday and then four Saturday and then we, because there was this bit large. three on Sunday and then four Saturday, and then we, because there was this bit large senior group playing on Sundays, we swapped it out. So I I don't think that had been, um, and then it's it's gone, so we did that for that senior group, but I don't think that it, we didn't take, we didn't, I, that was back when Steve Tyler was here and we just, we never changed it in the um, contract, just because the the usage of the courts generally, when I first came here, was not that large, so it was nobody thought it was a problem, but originally it was was the other way, so we are right now doing four on Saturday and only three on Sunday. But that was due to changing for a senior group, so I think if we're going letter by letter, I'd like it switched back to the switched for that reason, but other than that, yeah, everything else is good.
So I, what's, what's good during the week first?
Yeah, during the week, what, what is your preference? It's the, it's the.
Yeah, right now. Yeah, we, right now is we're using the the, uh, three hard courts and the clay, except for when the clay is mud.
And is, does that also apply for the weekend too?
Yeah.
When, and sorry, the, it seems like there's less cl- your, your private lessons seem to be more afternoon focused, is that right?
Correct.
So is there an opportunity to, should we be making, giving key holders availability for three courts? Um, three of the hard courts in the, you know, morning hours? Maybe to give them some more options to play?
Well, it's not really an, an issue, because I I don't think the demand is there that they need. I mean, usually there is generally three courts, because we're usually rarely.
Yeah, if Michael doesn't reserve it, then it's available to use. He, I think he can reserve up to seven days ahead, is it?
Mm-hmm.
Something like that.
Yeah, seven days ahead.
Then if Michael doesn't reserve it, then.
No, I think it's fourteen for Michael, seven for the.
If Michael doesn't use it, uh, to the time when the key holders can reserve, then they can block the court.
I do think it's interesting that the morning hours are less used by both key holders and Michael. Which is a point.
They probably don't, don't need.
Just wonder what we could use it for.
So will there be, I'm just thinking, there will be a contract that we will look at?
Uh, no, no, this is what we'll recommend is some changes to the contract. We, we don't need to look at it staff.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I think the the recommendation we'll have is that the court split be memorialized, that we we have a three plus one for Michael and those two hard courts for the, um, for the players, uh, wa- was it Saturday or Sunday? I can't remember that. They could have three courts.
Which one do you want now, Michael, for the Saturday and Sunday?
That they'll have three, the public will have three courts on Sunday.
Sunday, okay.
And just to be clear, on the other days, it's four usable courts, so that's a movable thing, because if the clay is not usable, then we only have five courts to deal with. That's what it is in this contract, just to be aware.
I I don't like that term usable. I, you as a lawyer probably doesn't, don't love the term usable, because.
Except for clay is, has a particular nature to it, you know, you can either use it or not, you know, in the rain, it's dead.
I know, it's just like, if I.
I mean, you can't say.
What do you do with contra-, you know, reserving court hours when it's raining, when the forecast says rain, like, I, that's why I think I'd, I'd prefer not to have a ambiguity in those, um, uh, you know, on the clay court.
Maybe I should say the clay, unless the clay, unless rain renders the clay court unusable. Or unless the clay court is rendered unusable, because that seems, one, I think Michael's handling along it, you know, it seems like you're balancing it, so I think we'll give you the outlines, and then I think, you know, you've got the idea of how the actual usage works. So whatever language you think reflects most on how the courts are used, I would tend to go along with Michael's language.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I, I think, well, yeah, because Michael's running a business, he has to be.
Yeah, he's got to know, but he's got to be able to project.
A little tough for key holders, because, you know, they also have the right to use it too, so.
Yeah.
You know, I don't, I don't know if there's a I'm probably leaning toward Michael's side, but I'm not sure if there's, it's also necessarily all that fair either to the key holders at the same time. Um, okay, so those I think are the two recommendations that that we have. Are there any other ones that we wanted to make?
Nope.
Okay.
Well, I think the third recommendation would be that Michael continue his efforts to contact people that don't show, that make a reservation and don't show. And at some point, there might have to be a penalty. But anyway, I would just be sure that he, that that's our idea. I don't know that we need to put it in a contract, but it seems to me it's important.
Okay, so, uh, that's that, um. If there's nothing else, why don't we move on to the CIP discussion? Uh, Michael, you're welcome to stay back if you want to continue the discussion about the tennis court CIP.
Okay.
We're moving on to the next item. Sally?
Okay, so.
One of the.
Bob, do you have something to say?
One of the things that, uh, can you hear me speaking?
Yes.
One of the things I didn't hear is the discussion about the clay court, whether it's usable or not usable. Nathan didn't want to have it to be, uh, not known whether it's usable or not usable. Um, but I don't know what happened with that discussion, but clearly in the time that I've spent at the tennis center, the clay court is not usable, period.
It's really not usable for adult play, really, when it's. Okay. It's kids. Okay, so, um.
Okay, I mean, we can discuss this as part of a capital improvement project to, to convert the clay to
Yeah.
a hard court, um, but basically, um, this is to look at all capital improvement projects and make a recommendation to council. So I make, I compile the list, but if you go to the section, the last page with the highlights, so this is, the ones in yellow are the projects, um, that were part of the Parkmaster Plan that we. Um, so that's just for your information.
Nancy?
Yeah. My question?
So I, I think the focus should be on things in the next fiscal year to be done, because, you know, the things that you're to and out are kind of too nebulous and too far away for.
So this is for the next fiscal year to make a recommendation, so it can be put into the budget for the next fiscal year.
I, I think we start talking about things further out, the year even longer, but
No.
we, we should prioritize things that are for safety, for, uh, things that are critical for the park, that, uh, that we can do in the next year. And I'm sorry, the, the yellowed items.
The yellow items are the items that we haven't completed, so you'll see this, this chart, um, right before that, so that, this is, I took this out of the Parkmaster Plan. And so then it's, you, you can't tell which ones we have done, that's from twenty fifteen. So I highlighted on the next page which ones of those that we haven't completed. We completed the ones that aren't highlighted.
It, it is appropriate to discuss here. These are just projects in the master plan, but we can add things like the playground, the clay court, the tennis wall. Yeah. Okay, so I have a nomination for the play structure, just removal of the play structure.
Removal, can figure out, yeah.
And then we could, yeah, figure out over. Yeah, we can, when staff is ready to, um, give us a recommendation or give us some options for a new play structure, we'll then consider it. But the removal of the play structures is one thing I think that we all agree that, uh, should be done sooner rather than later. Any other recommendations?
That's already been.
Oh, that's, okay, that's.
That's the first item on the list.
Is it? Okay. Well, so, uh, so that's something that we are gonna, so when it's on the list, does that mean it's, uh, to be done? Trying to find it.
The list on the front is just things that we've discussed.
Okay, but we are now deciding what's gonna prioritize to be done, so fencing the large oak tree, is that everyone consider that a priority?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I'll put that on the list.
In an aesthetic.
Yes. This tree could kill you, that's why we put the tape around.
We just spent a lot of time in the walkthrough talking about completing the event garden improvement project, which is stated on Sally's memo. Seems to me we've already decided on that, but I would add it to our list.
Okay, I think, uh, this.
Some of it's already in the budget, but I think we made some other suggestions as well.
Okay. That's complete event garden. Complete event garden. So it's a high priority to do within, by the ne- by the end of the next fiscal year. That, that's what we're voting, right? That's what you're saying?
I am.
Okay. Complete the event garden. Okay, there, others.
Well, Michael, are you still there?
No.
On that issue, seems to me it's very important that somebody contact the donor of the clay court. We've talked about this before, and so before we start ripping it up or suggesting that it should be converted, I think that, and I think Michael was the one perhaps that was gonna contact him, he's the only one I think that knows where it came from. So I would add that maybe Sally could follow up with him to make sure that we've done that.
Okay.
You remember the story? This is a man who doesn't live in Atherton at all, he has created that so his daughter could play.
Sorry, can you say that again?
Long years ago.
Not that long, twenty fourteen or something.
Donated.
Robert, oh, Robert just left. Bob, do you? Bob just got up, so Bob might remember the story.
So it's just informing this person.
Well.
Yes. Uh, Bob, do you remember the story of the, um, the donor who donated the clay court?
No, the clay court was pretty much, uh, decided, uh, with the approval of the committee. It was pretty much decided between the donor and Michael and the council.
But do you remember the details about whether we should contact the donor? Now, I mean, Rick, I think you talked about we don't need to do that. Um, am I correct on that from the last meeting?
We don't have a legal obligation to do it.
My opinion would be, it would be the right thing to let him know that the court, that the court is gonna be changed, but he should also be well aware that it is not usable as in its current state.
I agree. We can't hear.
Uh, we lost.
I apologize, I had turned off my mic, um, but yeah, I know, it was named after a coach that played at, that was, that taught at Player Capital. Um, and he passed away, um, and I think, I guess it's his family or whoever donated the money, uh, but to have an unusable court, I don't think is any uh, I'd rather it, it continue as a hard court, maybe in that person's name, um, there's nothing wrong with that, it just
Agreed.
But we, I'd rather have a usable court if he was a tennis player.
Right, it sounds like it's just, as you're saying, a courtesy call by Michael.
Correct.
Family or whoever to let them know, and as Bob said, it's unusable as it is, it's gonna get used a lot when we convert it, and hopefully that would be a positive thing.
Yeah.
Go forward.
Great.
Con- converting it, converting, it certainly makes sense for somebody to use it. The question becomes on who is gonna pay for the, uh, redoing of the court, and it, it's a big, uh, a big task.
Yep. Okay, uh, so I have four suggestions. Are there any others that we feel that should be prioritized for next fiscal year?
I think the carriage house bathroom remodel, I thought we were at already.
Yeah.
I remember a study.
Yeah, although it wasn't in our top three.
Big bathroom, bathroom construction costs went up.
Yeah.
Is that what happened?
Are the Russian?
They didn't budget enough money for that project.
Well, it's like too small or something.
Yeah.
It's an ex, yeah, unfortunately, construction for those things is crazy right now.
If we bundle that bathroom remodel with the bathroom rebuild that Rick was suggesting, would that be enough?
Yeah, right.
Save us a little bit, because we can combine two things together.
Kind of depends on the situation of both.
Yeah.
Yeah, and they're just gonna look at the project. I have one question, those Russian, what do they call the Russian planters?
I call them the Soviet era.
Soviet, you know, sorry.
Demo the Soviet.
Yeah, are those, are they already covered or do I have to create demo?
Let's have that as a capital improvement project.
Okay, um, oh, that would just be remove planters? Okay, great, I just thought there'd be consensus on that. And also with the flipping of the pedestal and something in it, is that also something that would go in?
It's something we can have.
Okay, alright.
What's, sorry, what's the shade structure at hot lot?
Um, so previously people have suggested putting in some type of, uh, the small lot, the small tot lots with the, like, the small toys, this small playground.
Yeah.
Putting in some type of shade structure.
So they have these like big.
Shade sales. Yeah, I've seen it.
Because during the summer, it gets hot, uh, real hot.
And there used to be a large tree there, but it was removed, so.
Uh, wha- what's the estimate on that one? Do we, the cost estimate?
Some of these have.
I guess it, it doesn't seem to fall under as big of a priority.
Yeah, considering that I think public work still is down a person.
Okay.
This might be a, a, or a long enough list for them to consider, because they still have to complete the very big circulation plan, um, so I don't wanna overload them too much. I think these are all, uh, health, safety, usability.
How about this other health and safety? There's two items there near the bottom of the first page. Refinish tables, create two accessible tables. I thought we were getting tables now where people from wheelchairs could get in. Sally, what are these? Then the north lawn.
Oh, on the picnic area, refinish tables, create two, okay.
Yeah, well, there's that, and then there's accessible seating at lawn edge, whatever that, I don't know what lawn we're talking about.
That's the big lawn.
I've named the north lawn?
We've got lots of lawns.
Oh, the main, the main big one.
Yeah, but what, where the, where, near where the oak tree is surrounded with the.
So we will, as part of the circulation, they are gonna put a concrete pad for the ADA picnic table that has a, that will have a path, so I think we're, we're working on that.
Okay. I just saw it highlighted.
Not picnic areas, refinish tables, but we, we are gonna make an accessible pad for an accessible table. So it might not, I mean, that might not have been part of this. This is from twenty fifteen. So I think the idea is just to make more of the picnic areas, ADA building.
Okay, and that's happening already with the circulation plan?
Just in the, the children's picnic area, yes.
Okay.
Part of the circulation.
Okay.
Rick, is there really a need to change the location of the courtyard?
Uh, where are you?
The very last, last of these items that Sally's highlighted.
Uh, well, it's been discussed. I mean, there was a desire to move the courtyard out of the center of the park, because it's right in the middle of the park. And the only place that, within the park, that was considered was to put the backyard of the Gorman House. Uh, which would put it close to the road and would probably require, well, I don't know if it would require an additional bridge or not, but that has been discussed. And that has been discussed, uh, at the same time that relocating the courtyard from this this area, uh, to the same place, but that's move forward.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is, uh, the priorities are defend the large oak tree, uh, demo, in the meantime, demo the play structure, a decision has been made. Um, complete the event garden and project. And then convert clay court to hardcore.
Yeah.
And then Sally, what does this mean about, um, parking lot repairs and new parking and so on? Is that already on the budget or not?
Master plan just to add more parking, so, uh, one area that we. Master plan just to add more parking. So, uh, one area that we were going to add more parking is, is where the place school is. Um, part of the master plan was to, um, move the place school over towards the front parking lot. And then that would free up to make parking. So that's one thing. I'm not sure if there's any other areas we can create more parking, but, but that's not happening. Cause I'm assuming we're probably just going to demo the place school when she doesn't want to rent it anywhere.
And then we, we can use that spot for more parking if we need to.
Parking or some, some, some other thing.
Yeah.
And what's this spot about?
Pickleball court.
This fencing improvements along Watkins.
Uh, a, a new fence is proposed to be put in along the whole.
Lane.
Yeah, the, the black fence.
Yeah, right.
And the curb.
And the curb.
Curb.
And that's already in the budget or not? It says 2023.
Well, I think that's the wrong date.
Okay.
Wait, where, where are you looking?
I think it is part of our, it is part of.
223, but I'm not sure if it was.
That, oh, it's.
It is, it is in our CIP this year, the Watkins fence.
Sorry, this might even be.
We wouldn't have to sit up the priority, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Clarify the timing on that. The fence and the curb are being.
Well, we don't have a time on it, but it was budgeted for this year. I don't think it's been designed. I don't, I don't think.
It, it hasn't been budgeted. It's.
Oh, it's not a good budget.
It's on the CIP.
I know it's.
Oh, it's not?
It's, it was discussed today to go on the CIP.
Oh, okay.
But it's, it, it's not yet on. What was on the CIP was the resurfacing of Watkins, which has occurred. But it didn't touch the curb or the fence.
Okay.
Uh, and there's two fences. There's the fence.
I thought it was replacing the chain link with a black.
Yeah.
Iron fence.
Replacing the chain link that is, uh, on, right on the road.
Yeah, yeah, that's.
Yeah. That's been discussed.
Is that what we're talking about?
That, yeah, but that, that is, that's what we should be talking about. That hasn't been on the CIP before.
Oh, it has. I thought it was on this year.
It is.
Okay, okay. Um, well, it's not really, I mean, in my mind, it's not really a safety issue.
An aesthetic issue, but.
It's a safety issue for kids riding their bikes on Watkins. Because if they hit that curb, it is pretty high. And if they hit that curb, they sweep back into the road. So they're trying to get away from the danger. Is they're trying to get away from the car? They go to the right, they hit the curb and they sweep back into the road.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, we got that one before. Is the fence related?
Well, it's right next to, I mean, there's this little path, little thin pathway.
Right, I've walked it many times.
Yeah, with very poor asphalt on it. And what's been discussed is replacing that path with a more, not a sidewalk, but a easier walking surface.
But that wouldn't have to have the fence replaced.
But it's all part of the same ideas to replace the, the little fence.
Yeah.
Yeah, replace the little fence, the curb and the path.
I see.
And then the print, the, we change the great big thing to a curb or whatever you call it. We do something.
It would do something with the curb. Yeah, I'm not sure what. Nothing's been proposed.
Okay, yeah, so it's not such traffic committee or the, um.
Yeah, that seems like a more.
Outside of curb.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not really part of the park.
I was going to say.
No.
No, it's not really part of the park, but, uh, staffs look at it as part of the park. But we talked about the CIP today and as part of road maintenance. And they preferred to discuss it as part of the park. I'm not sure why, but that's what they said.
Yeah, if you do it, that's fine with me.
Um, so anything else?
Okay.
Thanks for hearing us along, Sally.
Do we need a vote on this?
Make a motion.
I make a motion to approve those priorities.
Those four priorities? Okay.
Priorities.
Place structure, fencing the oak tree, completing the event garden and the clay court conversion to a hard court while forming the daughter.
Hallelujah, praise.
Second, do I have a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, let's move on to number five prioritized projects. Um, if we start with pickleball first.
Uh, there.
There's.
There's no update.
There's no update?
Dave, um, the council made a, like a subcommittee to look at the survey and I have not heard an update from council on that.
Okay.
You have anything? And then circulation project, I have no update.
That, it hasn't gone out the bid?
Nope.
Is it going, has it been approved to go out the bid?
Yes.
Okay.
I thought it was approved by council to go out the bid.
Okay.
Last month.
Okay, so it might be just a big packet in order to fill, well, housing, I think we're waiting on, uh, feedback. And then the third one now escapes me. What was our third priority?
The Brightview one, but that one.
The what?
We'll give you.
Oh, the event garden.
Oh.
We can also give Brightview feedback from the walkthrough that we did today. So Tony will be doing future meetings. He'll, he'll actually, uh, I'm just finishing up this month doing park stuff. And then it's all Tony. So, but I will make sure Tony brings to you updates for those two items. They're important and by then we should have.
Okay, excellent, excellent.
Lots of minutes.
Um, and then I guess we'll move to item six. Uh, are there any updates on, from the council on discussion of housing at the park? Or that should be aware.
Uh, we discussed, uh, housing in a very general way. Uh, at our meeting in March. And the residents who live within 500 feet of the Gilmore House were all notified that we were going to discuss. We got a couple of emails. We didn't get a flood of emails like we've gotten in other areas. Uh, and we didn't do anything with it because we hadn't yet heard from the state on that. Um, but it's, it, it, it's going to come back for further discussion. We did just hear from the state. I haven't read their letter, but they just sent us a 12-page letter yesterday.
12 pages, sounds like we didn't pass.
Right.
Oh, no, we're, we're not going to pass. We're not going to pass. Doesn't matter, it doesn't matter how long it is.
No, yeah.
There's not going to be any point at which we pass.
Okay. Um, there was some discussion about, uh, using the Gilmore House as the, uh, which you mentioned earlier as the combined corp- corporation yard for here and.
Not in connection with this conversation, but yes, that has been discussed in the past. I, I don't think that's before the council at this point.
Did you have a comment?
Sorry, the Gilmore House is the house that somebody lives in, but the sheriff.
Yeah, the, the police chief.
One right as you go out.
That's what Trish asked.
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Just clarify.
I, I personally think it would be a great place for the courtyard because it's out of, it's, people don't see it. It's off to the side and so it won't conflict with park uses. And also, you know, you know, the courtyard in the park and the courtyard here are in very prominent places. So you kind of, the public sees it. It's not very nice looking kind of structure. Whereas in, in that corner of the park, it's kind of, there's large mature trees there. So you don't really see it.
No, I think that's a good idea. But you'd lose the use of the house?
You lose the use of the house, but I think going forward, it's going to be very rare for any town employee to want to live in the house.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, because our, we usually had it for the town manager or, or the park manager. But, um, uh, our, our town manager hasn't lived, our current one hasn't lived in the park for years. And, or ever, I guess.
Whoa, wait, let me.
No, not true.
The, the Gilmore House was donated to the town in mid 1970s and moved to the park. And ever since it's been there, except for a very few number of years, it's either been lived in by the town city manager, the town's police chief. And every time that someone has lived in that house, uh, that person has been designated to be the park manager. Which is currently true of the chief of police.
Okay.
Um, the reason that the town ma- the city manager doesn't live there is he lives in Mill Valley and he'd rather commute than, uh, live there. He had the opportunity to live there. He just didn't want to do it.
Hmm.
But, um, I don't think that means that nobody will ever want to live there.
Okay.
Correct.
The, the chief of police likes it a lot. He, he would want to be there. I mean, you know, it's a, it's a nice, uh, three or four bedroom ranch house that's been cared for. It, you're in the middle of the park. I mean, it's a pretty nice setting. So, uh, yeah, so I, I don't have the opinion that somebody would want to live there.
Okay, okay, I thought.
Just sorry, Karen, does, do they have to, do? Is that considered income to the?
Uh, it's a benefit.
And, and also condition of employment.
Right, I, I'm just, uh, uh, but we do, okay, it is a benefit spelled out in their agreement.
Yeah.
Because, yeah.
Exactly sure how it's spelled out, but.
Okay.
I know that when it was, um, decided that the city manager would not live there. We basically gave him a car allowance instead of living there, but there's some economic benefit to it, no question about it.
Yeah, I would believe, uh, yeah, that thing. Um, and what's the duties of the park manager?
To manage the park.
Okay, it's, that's, that's fine. I just want to make sure that there wasn't something I was missing.
They just keep an eye on the park.
Yep, fair enough. No, it's, it's a great benefit for high value employ- a, a high value employee to be able to have a location inside town. So I fully.
There will be somewhat of a conflict, maybe that the people who are going to have to be put up there thanks to the city's, uh, re- response they just got. Because there would be a lot of pressure to put housing there. Maybe they could be right next to the courtyard there. That'd be a wonderful spot for them, right? I think we better wait on the courtyard because the housing issue is going to come up and.
Yeah, although on the housing side, I don't know, it's a lot of trouble to set up, to build, to manage for the town. And it's not a lot of units either, so it's not going to give us a ton of credit.
No.
It will require a lot of staff time.
Got to get credit for, in my view, correct, got to get credit for using public land to try to solve the problem.
Yeah.
We could demand low income. We own the property.
No, if they give us a lot of credit in terms of we can.
Well, we, we need every dime we can get, you know?
But it's only a few units. It's only.
We're going to put six or eight so we can try to be consistent with the deed, but we need.
But six or eight's not much and this is for this eight-year period. What happens in another eight years?
Well, you and I will, I won't be wrong.
You won't.
Yeah, right.
So.
And you might not be on the.
And, but then that, that part is forever taken away from the park, right?
Oh, it's, it's unfortunate. Yeah, I mean, but that's, it was even mentioned today by our mayor.
Yeah.
That possibility. So, yeah, so.
And everything for the park too. Don't we have bylaws and all sorts of things?
Yeah.
Bylaws, but there's a grant, there, there's a grant and the deed is very specific that the park has to be used as a high-class recreational park. And the, that's the language in the deed. It's very clear. And it expressly says that if it's used for housing other than incidental housing. That the ownership of the park will revert to the trustees of Stanford University.
Yeah, you wouldn't want to be doing that.
It, it, it expressly says.
You can't do that.
So the question is what is incidental housing use? And, um, having one house in the park, uh, has been deemed to be incidental housing, although it's never been tested. But, uh, that's what it's deemed to be. So, uh, would eight units be incidental? I, I, I think that could easily challenge. And, uh, if, I mean, there was one proposal to rezone the one acre parcel that the Gilmore House is on. And to essentially remove it from the park. And I think that if you're taking property away from the park, that, 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 that is different from the deed.
Yeah.
I think, so.
Especially if you rezone it to something else.
And if you rezone, I mean, I, I, I think whatever is decided to be done with the park has to be done very carefully. Because let's face it, the property's worth at today's value, a lot of, over $200 million.
Yeah.
And that's not going to be ignored.
Okay, um, any other comments or this topic? We'll move on to back to the future, uh, foundation report, Frank or.
Foundation has not met since our last meeting because Monday night was much more important for people to watch a basketball game than me. So we will not be meeting until next Monday.
So acceptable.
Well, so a lot of UCS, uh, San Diego State.
Right, yeah, right.
Alumni, I guess. Um, then let's go on to the park going on report.
So in your packet, you have the, the, uh, April calendar, the March revenue. Um, you have the park report which shows, uh, facility rentals, rental activity and support usage. And, and then you have the financial report and at the end you have the quality assessment, which is what Brightview gives us. Um, do you have any questions on any of those reports?
Is, uh, is ADAP still meet, meeting in the pavilion everywhere?
I think they are. I need to, I need to, so what happens is Cassidy gives us the calendar.
Yeah.
But I think they're meeting in this room.
Yeah, I think I see emails where they say at town hall instead of in.
Yeah, so we'll update the calendar. I'll, I'll confirm with her and then update it.
And then the only thing else I saw in the Brightview report, it says, I don't know, it's just a minor thing, Town of Atherton, Town Center. I don't, I think they mean. Yeah, I think they mean Hobart Farm.
Yeah, yeah, because they also give one for Town Center.
That's the one that has tennis club with it? We're looking at that.
This. Oh, yeah, it's one, uh, prepared for Town of Atherton Town Center, but it's really prepared for Hobart Farm.
Yep.
So any questions or comments on this? Okay. If not, why don't we move on to any future agenda topics that anyone wants to propose for our, uh, May meeting? Seeing none. Uh, next meeting will be May 3rd. Hybrid and in-person, or if it just say in-person, although there will be a still component, in-person for us. Uh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move. No, I can't do it.
Hey, hey, not allowed.
Point of order.
I would mo- I would, uh.
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn. Move to adjourn. I was like, motion.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you. See you, Frank.
Robert, thank you.
You guys.